Okay, planning board, we are live, we are recording, phone lines are opened, go for it.
Alright guys, we're kickoff here. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the town of East Hampton's Planning Board meeting for April 23rd. We have a very ambitious agenda tonight, which hopefully we can keep moving along very briskly. We've got two public hearings, we have four site plan reviews, we have a sub waiver, we have a discussion about code change on our work session agenda, and we have two additional items on our regular meeting, so we have brought dinner with us and we're kind of ready to tuck in and see it through. Anyway, the first public hearing is the Hampton 310 LLC barn, which is Bruce. Eric, you're here for the applicant?
I am Dean.
Dean, and I am recused from this matter, so I'm gonna leave this to Jen.
I'll wait till Ed vacates premises. Public hearing notice again, Jen? Yes, okay. Stand by, everybody, sorry, I'm unprepared. Oh Bruce, okay, Bruce, you get to read, yeah.
And it's in its entirety, right?
I believe it's in its entirety for this one, and I don't have it.
Ready, Jen, do you want me to go?
Go ahead, Bruce, yes, please.
Okay, public hearing notice. Take notice that a public hearing will be held before the East Hampton Town Planning Board at Town Hall 159 Pentagon Road, East Hampton, on Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025, at 6:30 PM, or as soon thereafter as this matter may be heard to consider the application of Hampton 310 LLC barn site plan to relocate a 1,185 square foot barn from Tyson Lane to 310 Further Lane. The barn is proposed as an agricultural support structure that would be used for equipment storage and the temporary storage of produce grown on site. The proposed barn includes a sink for washing produce, a new septic system, and underground includes a sink for washing, doesn't make sense, sink for washing produce, a new septic system and underground water, that's twice, underground water and electric lines connecting to the east of Tyson Lane. A pervious driveway is also proposed. The property contains 349, 480,000 square feet, or 8.0230 acres, and is located on the south side of Further Lane, East Hampton, and is situated in an A5 residence zoning district as shown on the official zoning map of the town of East Hampton and is identified on the Suffolk County tax map as parcel number 300-189-6-2.4. Subject application is classified as a type 2 action pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, Part 617 of the New York Code of Rules and Regulations, and Chapter 128 Environmental Quality Review of the Town Code. The survey prepared by Saskia Surveying Company PC dated revised January 19th, 2025. A set of plans prepared by Drew Bennett, PEPC, dated June 19th, 2024, including Site Plan C-1 and Sanitary Details C-2. And a set of plans prepared by Ferguson and Shamimi and Architects dated revised January 2nd, 2025, including existing and proposed barn, proposed barn plans, A100, are available for inspection at the Planning Board offices, 300 Pentagon Place, Suite 103, East Hampton, New York. The public hearing will be held live and in person by the Planning Board and will be available electronically by video and teleconferencing and will be televised on local TV, LTV, Channel 2020, Channel 22, and available for livestream on the LTV website. The public shall be permitted to appear in person but may also provide comments on the matter being heard by calling Any person or party wishing to be heard with respect to the foregoing may do so in person or by agent or by attorney or by calling in to the livestream or by written comment addressed to the Planning Board, 300 Pentagon Place, Suite 103, East Hampton, New York, 11937. Comments may also be submitted to the Planning Board by email to planningboard@easthamptonny.gov. All comments must be received by the Planning Board by the date and time of the public hearing dated April 2nd, 2025.
Thanks, Bruce. Um, I think everybody knows the drill, it's three minutes per person who wishes to speak. Do we have anyone in person here in the room who would like to speak on this? Oh, I'm sorry. Charlie, do we have jurisdiction over this?
I received some notice, but I did, Jody, did they ever respond? They never filled out the date on the notice. Eric, can I see the notices?
Yeah, sure.
They left the dates blank, I'm sure it's fine.
They did, they came in and filled it out.
Came in and did it, I don't know, I just wanted to show you. Did you want to? I got that.
I actually, I think this is the funny news.
But the eighth is that, so that's the mailing. There was a separate one for Yeah, they just didn't, they just didn't date when he posted it.
Yeah, I know he came back, I sent him back and he took the call, so I think it was the same day.
The same day that he notified?
Well, we had one person do the mail.
Yeah, the mailing.
Peter from our office.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. One second. Yeah, we reviewed the affidavits of notice and posting, everything appears to be in order and the board has jurisdiction over this hearing.
Thank you. Um, and then planner overview? I'm not sure which one of you has the application?
Do we go whole project?
No, I think you just give a brief project script.
Yeah, so, um, sort of, we're the narrative that Bruce read, it's simply moving this barn shown in the yellow from a property to the self, to the subject property, 310 Further Lane, it's an existing, uh, sort of barn structure and being located through that area, they're putting in an AI wastewater system, even though there's no sewage disposal. The county required that, just given the, um, biholderical soil, I preserve area. Lighting details were provided, there's three lights on the barn, they're all fully shielded, compliant. Parking area driveway, that's all unimproved, they'll simply be driving across the grass. And, yeah, everything seems good, they're taking access from the nearest point, which is directly to the east. The water and electrical service lines were rerouted to the east to limit the disturbance to the orchard to the north, so it's pretty simple, simple project, just moving the barn, uh, to the location scene. And they'll be able to use it to, uh, wash the produce grown on site, none of that's for sale, it's really just for the enjoyment of the owners of the property.
Great, thanks, Chris. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to be heard on this matter? Matt, do we have anyone on the phone for this matter?
You have zero callers, thank you.
Thank you. Do we close public hearing? I make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Six. One recusal, zero notice. Thank you very much, and then?
Ed, we need Ed back.
Yeah.
Or bye, see you later.
Thank you.
Right.
Welcome back.
Matt in action, thank you. So our second public hearing is the Marim Cabanas in Montauk. Michael, you have that on our end. We get a review of it first, from the Planning Department, correct?
Do we read it first and then review, or how?
We read first.
We did it backwards.
You may have done it backwards, I've never done a public hearing.
You read first. Public hearing notice, take notice, the public hearing will be held before the East Hampton Town Planning Board at Town Hall 159 Pentagon Road, East Hampton, on Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025, at 6:30 or soon thereafter as this matter may be heard to consider the application of Marim Cabana Site Plan to add five cabanas on top of existing decking. The proposed cabanas have an area of 72 square feet and are eight feet tall. The property is currently improved with four two-story masonry buildings, two sheds, a bar, paved parking, wooden decks, and a pool. The property contains 82,087 square feet, 1.885 acres, and is located on the south side of Ocean Terrace, Montauk, and is situate in a B Residence Coastal Erosion Overlay District, Water Protection District, Zoning District, as shown on the official zoning map of the town of East Hampton, and is identified on the Suffolk County Tax Map as parcel 300-49-6-26. Subject application is classified as a type 2 action pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, Part 617 of the New York Code of Rules and Regulations, and Chapter 128 Environmental Quality Review of the Town Code. A survey prepared by George Wallbridge Surveyors, PC, dated revised February 8th, 2024. A set of plans prepared by, is it Schoonover or Schoonover? And Vanderhoof Architects dated August 4, 2023, including Site Plan and Cabana Plans, A1, and Site Plan with Bluff Crest Line, A2. A ALTA/NSPS Land Title Survey prepared by Bach &amp; Clark dated revised June 6, 2018, and Page 14 of 59 of the CEHA dated June 7, 1988, are available for inspection at the Planning Board offices, 300 Pentagon Place, Suite 103, East Hampton, New York. The public hearing will be held live and in person by the Planning Board and will be available electronically by video and teleconferencing and will be televised on local TV, Channel 22, and available for livestream on the LTV website. The public shall be permitted to appear in person but may also provide comments on the matter being heard by calling 351-888-3, wait, 351-888-6331, or by email. Any person or party wishing to be heard with respect to the foregoing may do so in person or by agent or by attorney or by calling to the livestream or by written comment addressed to the Planning Board, 300 Pentagon Place, Suite 103, East Hampton, New York, 11937. We're almost done. Comments may also be submitted to the Planning Board by email to planningboard@easthamptonny.gov. All comments must be received by the Planning Board by the date and time of the public hearing. Ed Crute, Chairman. Okay, thank you, Michael. Will, are you gonna give us the lowdown?
Need the lawyer first.
Ah, yes, do we have jurisdiction?
Yes, I reviewed the affidavits of notice and posting and everything appears to be in order and this board has jurisdiction over this hearing.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so this project is located at 21 Ocean View Terrace in Montauk. It proposes to construct five cabanas on top of existing decking at the rear of the site. The proposed cabanas will be 72 square feet each and eight feet tall. Several public comments were received from neighbors regarding the cabanas and these are available in the project file. The board should review and take these comments into consideration when discussing the application. Let me just pull up the elevations of the cabanas. So they're pretty open and they have a fabric sort of roof.
Is that it, Will? Okay. Yeah, there's not much to say about this. So these cabanas are really more like pergolas, actually, right? They're open structures. I think many people may have the view that a cabana is something like any closed structure where you might, um, you know, change clothes or whatever, you know, or have store drinks or that kind of thing, it's not that sort of thing, it's an open pergola. Alright, so with that, um, you know, as Jen said earlier, I'm sure, we'll start with people in the room, if anyone has a comment on it, please make that known. We have three minutes, time for three minutes per comment, we'll go to LTV and see if anyone's online wanting to comment. We don't think anyone in this room is here to comment. I'm guessing, okay. Uh, Matt, do we have anybody on, on, online?
You have zero callers, thank you.
Okay.
Just like to make one request, if they'd like to get these up for the summer, so it's possible at the next meeting to have it on for deemed complete, end of public hearing, ready for approval, maybe have the resolution of approval on?
Okay.
So can I? Hi Tina, log around for the Planning Department, I would just say, Lori, there's some public comments in the file, it'd be great if you want us to do it quickly, if you look at the comments and provide some input on responses, so those can be presented to the board and they can feel comfortable that they're addressed.
Yeah, good idea, they're in the file, as you know, Lori.
Yep.
Alright, so we need a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
A second? Ava, all in favor of the public hearing? Alright, we're done. Okay, thanks, everybody, so we're gonna move on to our first site plan review of the night, which is the Seacrest Pool and Shed. And Drew, that's you for the, for the Planning Board, and Chris, that's you, and the applicant is Lori, okay?
Could we go?
Yep.
Alright. So this is the second review of the Seacrest Pool and Shed Site Plan, this last review July 10, 2024. Given overview of the property, uh, resort zone, it's about 7.7 acres and contains a pre-existing resort use. This is special permit use. Property is within coastal erosion zone, uh, one oceanal twirl zone, partially within the local waters, rough front revitalization program area, and is also within a significant coastal fishing wildlife habitat. The background on the proposal itself, uh, project's been revised to expand scope of work and proposes two development phases. Phase one proposes replacing the existing swimming pool terrace and pool enclosure fence and constructing pool side pergolas. Also proposed for phase one is a 198 square foot shed, with an enclosure fence for pool equipment, an enclosure fence, uh, for the existing shed and a three-foot, 10-inch tall retaining wall by the proposed shed. Also proposed are gravel walkways and phase one will involve replacing the existing lighting on the site to bring it into compliance with the Town Code, uh, with fully shielded fixtures. Meanwhile, phase two, which is shown in red on this plan, so the green shows phase one, red is phase two. That involves a work that's with, will require natural resources special permit from the zoning board appeals, is EBA, but will not require any variances. This phase proposes a new IA wastewater system, a turf area for games and barbecues, um, a 3,647-foot two-story clubhouse building, which will have a, is proposed to have bathrooms, a gym, lounge area, and a covered patio. There's also additional walkways around the clubhouse building and lighting for the project area, safe still. So next, I'm going to just go over the issues from the discussion that we had, uh, last July. So the Planning Board requested that the applicant, uh, provide details on the existing sanitary system. The applicant provided the location of these systems, um, the capacity of some, but no additional details. And the Planning Department notes that the, uh, that the proposed IA system will only connect to the clubhouse building. Existing sanitary systems for the resort units and reception buildings, uh, will remain in their existing condition. And the proposed density load for phase two is 475 gallons per day, uh, for the clubhouse building. Town Consulting Engineer viewed the proposed IA system, did not find any issues. And the maximum density load for the entire parcel is 4,617 gallons per day. So we just asked that the applicant should confirm that the site will remain in compliance with that number, uh, when this flow is added to the project and in doing so, consider the existing flow to make sure it's below that threshold. So the next comment was regarding the parking arrangement, and before we just asked the applicant to provide some dimensions as well as circulation pattern. The applicant responded with the dimensions for the parking spaces and arrows for the circulation, uh, pattern. And the Planning Department wants to note that no accessible spaces are indicated where four are required, uh, by the Americans Disabilities Act. So the dimensions for the drive aisles also must be shown with a minimum width of 24 feet per the Town Code. And if the number of parking spaces decreases, uh, when creating accessible spaces and like the, uh, associated areas of aisles, applicant should confirm, uh, that their parking is still compliant with the Town Code by providing the requirements and methods used for computing such, if they, if they lose some parking spaces. In addition, the Planning Department notes that there's some parking spaces along the western property line within the right-of-way of Navajo Road. And the applicant should confirm that they have permission for those spaces. If it's not established, it should be sought from the Highway Department. And the proof of such would need to be provided to the board. There's signage currently indicating that the spots is for hotel guests only. Unauthorized users would be towed and, uh, given that there's also a public beach adjacent to the site, if those spaces are not able to be kept for the sole use of the property, parking will have to be revisited and reevaluated. Submission indicates that the spaces are nine by 20 feet, uh, long, and that complies with the Town Code. Some of the spaces do differ in size, it appears, but the, uh, parking layout is reflected upon the most recent CO, so we don't, we don't see an issue regarding the, uh, size of the existing parking spaces. Lastly, on parking curb cuts, uh, should be indicated to show an accessible path to the pool area, and that's, uh, in accordance with the Town Consulting Engineer's comments. Board also asked the applicant just to indicate the clearing proposed, applicant did that, so there's no further review regarding that. Uh, applicant was asked to provide the finished floor elevations and ground elevation for proposed building structures. And they did so for most structures, the only ones missing were the walkways and the retaining wall. The, um, walkways, given that it's nearly flat slope across the project area, we recommend that that be, we'd like to see that elevations provided for the proposed retaining wall. Next was that they should provide the area of the proposed buildings and structures, they did that sufficiently for analysis. Uh, next on was setbacks to be provided, they indicated that for the clubhouse building, the other structures appear to substantially meet setback requirements, so no further issue with that. Next was regarding the lighting, which I brought up briefly, uh, we want details on the existing lighting. Instead, the applicant's going to provide it a comprehensive lighting plan for both phases one and two. As mentioned, the existing lighting that's not compliant will be fixed in phase one with compliant lighting. And the plan satisfied most of the requirements from the Planning Board guidelines, there's just a couple issues to be addressed. Just gonna pull up the lighting plan, the board. So the western property line, there are some foot candles measured above the maximum of .1 foot candles, so that should be revised to avoid light spill across the property. And the only other issues were to indicate the mounting height and the type of control for the lights, whether it be a motion sensor or a timer. Those each details should be added and then the lighting plan should be sufficient. The Planning Board asked for elevation regarding topography, um, of the site, some key elevations were provided on the revised submission. And, um, the applicant should refer to the Town Consulting Engineer's recommendation that a grading and drainage plan be provided for the project area. If that plan's provided, it should provide, uh, sufficient information for us to analyze the topography and would be required across the whole, the whole property. The last issue from the initial review was to provide elevation drawings and the applicant provided them for every structure, uh, proposed. So that, that issue's, um, satisfied as well. So moving on to the issues of discussion, other issues. State Environmental Quality Review Act, it's a type 2 action pursuant to SECR and Chapter 128 of the Town Code, no additional reviews required for that. And then, since the, uh, last review, this, this phase two, um, is proposing the turf area as well as the clubhouse building shown here, I would just like the applicant to confirm that the clubhouse will be for resort guests only and not introduce new users to the site. The proposed turf barbecue area along with the other proposed structures for phase two are within 150 feet of the wetlands, 200 feet for the IA system, which will require the NRSP from, from the ZBA, um, just make them aware of that. And there's some hot tub equipment proposed within one of the enclosure fences for these sheds. There's no hot tub indicated on the other plans of this revised submission. So I just want the applicant to confirm if that's proposed and indicated accordingly, uh, if so. Regarding stormwater drainage, um, there's not really information on proposed stormwater management systems that provide adequate stormwater infrastructure to achieve compliance with the town standards. We note that it's advisable to minimize paid service to the greatest extent and, um, explore opportunities to reduce, um, impervious surfaces. And as mentioned, the Town Consulting Engineer would like to see a grading and drainage plan to demonstrate that it's managed properly on, on property. Regarding landscaping, landscape plans were submitted for phases one and two, uh, they just need minor revisions. We want to see the location of the screening, so like the fences, vegetative screening here there, as well as the clear, um, symbology for each plant species plus the height and spacing of the plants. Regarding the engineer comments, there's a grading and drainage plan, um, and also just wanted to have it demonstrated that there's an accessible roof provided, uh, from the parking lot to the pool area, showing like curb cuts and that it will be made accessible for users trying to access that. And also, um, the engineer noted that construction details and specifications for the pool terrace, walkways, other impervious surfaces, including pavement restoration for the parking area, which the IA system will go beneath, uh, should be provided. Regarding the, uh, pool disinfection requirement, revised submission includes pool plans, which will, with, they included the, uh, required approval from Suffolk County Department of Health Services, but the size of the pool from the approved pool plans must be reflected on the site plans for phase one, there's about a difference of 177 square feet, so we just want to make sure the pools are indicated consistently across the plans. And we just note that the, the county approval expires in October 16, 2025, for the pool. Office of Fire Prevention, the fire marshal issued some comments, um, regarding compliance with ADA. The first detailed that buildings on the There we go. So for phase one, this is the existing pool side building, it has some bathrooms in it. And the fire marshal notes that, um, given that the work is around this primary function, the pool, that those buildings should be brought into ADA compliance, even if they are existing. The work is required to provide accessibility to bathrooms for a, a project of this scope. And then, regarding phase two, the fire marshal mentions that the second story of the proposed clubhouse building is not accessible and accessibility should be provided, uh, to that second story of the clubhouse building, um, with the elevation drawings there.
Chris, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So there, there is a small kind of pool house bathroom kind of situation now, right? Will that be demolished when the new building is built, is that?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't make that clear, but yeah, so phase one involves the work around the pool, it'll remain for that. The, um, mechanical rooms will be broom swept since that equipment's The mechanical rooms will be broom swept since that equipment's moving by the sheds. And the bathrooms will remain in place. However, per existing building code of the state, fire marshal mentioned that these bathrooms should be made ADA compliant. And that's a specific code, current primary function that access to bathrooms and water fountains must be provided for work like this. So yeah, second story of the proposed clubhouse building should be made accessible. And then just regarding the other approvals for the property, the architectural review boards required for everything except for the pool and the surrounding pool patio. The zoning board of appeals for the NRSP that I mentioned for the work within jurisdiction for phase two. Office of Fire Prevention for the ADA compliance that I went over. Suffolk County Department of Health Services required for the swimming pool in phase one and the proposed IA system in phase two. And Suffolk County Planning Commission reviews required as well. So in conclusion, the applicant, the application is incomplete pending additional details on proposed structures and compliance with the site plan and ADA requirements. The planning board should discuss whether they agree to waive requirements for ground elevations of the proposed walkway. The planning department recommends that the board must require a grading and drainage plan to demonstrate stormwater management and ADA compliance. A revised landscaping plan should be submitted. Minor modifications are needed for the lighting plans. The applicant should revise the site plans in phase one to be consistent with the pool size approved by the STDHS. Lastly, the applicant should revise plans to address the fire marshal findings and the town consulting engineer's comments regarding ADA compliance.
Okay, great. Chris, thank you. So before we call the applicant up, just to note that Chris Tesuno, the architect, is with us on Zoom. Can you hear us, Chris?
I sure can.
And we can hear you. Okay, all right. I don't see palm trees in the background there. All right, okay. Lori, are you going to speak for the applicant?
I believe we both are.
Okay.
So Lori will speak to land planning services and then Chris Tesuno with Tesuno Architecture. I can answer a few of the questions and he should probably address the others mainly pool size, ADA compliance, and most of this is just revisions, housekeeping revisions, which we'll take care of. The clubhouse is for resort guests only. The pool houses is just a discrepancy. Chris is going to speak to ADA. And there's a density load compliance will have confirmed by the project septic engineer. Grading and drainage planning with an ADA compliant route will be provided to the pool. Landscaping and lighting plans will be revised. There is no hot tub. We'll remove the note about hot tub equipment. And Chris, what do you have to add to that?
Yeah, so apologies about that. There was a hot tub in our original design and we've neglected to remove the note at the pool equipment shed. After we removed the hot tub from the plan. As far as the dimensions go and the size of the pool, the pool engineer dimensioned the interior edges of the pool and we dimensioned the exterior of the shell of the pool and the coping. So that's the differentiation there. We can easily change our dimension. They are drawn exactly the same size. It was just that our dimensions were to a different place. As far as ADA is concerned, our consultant, all of the walkways and everything on the ground level are will be compliant. The there's no second floor, just to be clear. There is a roof terrace. However, that use is identical to the use on the first floor. So according to our consultant, it doesn't have to be comply, it doesn't have to be accessible. So as provided that, you know, any function that is given to the property is usable by someone that that needs accessibility. Our property will be compliant and we can provide a report to further that. As far as the parking is concerned, there is adequate room within the existing lot to reallocate the spaces and appropriately designate the four spaces that are required. We can, we can do that within within the zone. It just needs to be adjusted accordingly. There's, there is no striping and there is no curb blocks. So that that can be properly addressed in our next submission.
Okay. Yeah, Lou, please lead our discussion.
Yeah, I think a lot of the issues are just issues that need more information. And once we get that information, it should be clarified. I do have some questions regarding, well, first of all, the ADA, that's an important issue for us all all the time. I don't understand why the second level, let's call it that, is not does not require ADA compliance, ADA accessibility, whether it's a terrace or it's deemed to be a second floor. It's still an area that's going to be used by guests. So why wouldn't it be required to be ADA accessible? I'm not sure I understand that part.
Well, we have, on the first floor, the same functions are available. This is just another seating area. So it's outside. There is an outside covered area on the first floor. There's an outside covered area on the roof. because someone can, we could, if there were to, if the guests were to have a birthday party, let's say on the, at the property, they could do it on on the covered lounge or in the park, you know, in the other areas of the first level. It's not required that you have a function on the second floor.
Okay, well, if that's the case, that, you know, that that'll be the case. I just, I just find it odd. And I would like some clarification on that, maybe the planning.
We'll ask the fire marshal to confirm that.
Yeah, I think that's what we need to do.
Yeah.
As far as the parking is concerned, there's the issue with the parking on Navajo Road where some of the spaces spill over into the right of way. That's one of the issues on Navajo Road. The other issue is there's parking across Navajo Road for the beachgoers, the public beach that's located there. So there's a question about whether or not those hotel parking spots will be used by the public or what what will you be doing to protect that so that we don't have a diminishment of parking spaces that are allocated for the hotel? So that's, that's an issue there. And I'm sure you'll take care of the four ADA spaces that are required. And the other, the other item is the drainage plan. I think that's an important issue that needs to be clarified as well. And it's one that I'm sure you'll have all the information and data on that. The septic, the last issue that I wanted to know. So I, I understand that you're marked on the plans where the current septic system is for the hotel units. But do we know, do we have any information from the Suffolk County Health Department as to what kind of septic system is in place right now?
They're conventional.
So current.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, you can.
Chris, go ahead.
For both Chris.
It's Tesuno, sorry.
So there's a traditional system in place right now. There, we have a, a new proposal for a new system going in that TF Engineering, David Rhodes, has has prepared. The design for the system is a multi-phase plan. So our initial phase right now is, will be addressing the new facility. Over the way that they set it up, there is a way that we do not have to do every building and every, every leaching pool all at once. So they're looking at a phased system over a few years to bring the entire property into compliance, even the, or for, for the newer, newer systems. But that's not the intention immediately. So that is, it's, it's, it's the way that they set it up with the DEC and with, with, with the other agencies. So
So I wasn't, so what you're saying is that the septic for the hotel buildings will eventually be converted to the new IA system?
Eventually, but that's not part of the immediate plan. But that's part of the long-term plan that, that is, that is scheduled within our, our, our guidelines.
Will that be Chris Stoker? We have that as part of the the approval of this plan of this.
No, none of that's proposed for this work. So I imagine Chris Tesuno is likely talking about a project they have planned for the future. But that's not proposed for either phase.
The compliance to this plan.
No, and, and none of those systems are being changed with this project. None of the flow is being altered for the resort units or the reception buildings. It's really just focused on the system tied to the clubhouse building. It's not going to change for phase one, so they won't do the upgrade there. But when they put the new building, that's when the IA system is proposed and we'll go in.
And Chris Tesuno, so the, the maximum density right now for the property is 4,617 gallons per day. Do we have the information as to what the outflow, the current outflow is right now? Whether it's under or above that number?
I'm sorry, I, oh, thank you.
Yeah, I've asked TF Engineering to address that question. He's submitting it with our response.
Okay, great. All right, that's all I have. Okay, thanks, Lou. Does anyone else have any questions for Chris or Lori or any other comments or thoughts?
I just wanted to clarify the Navajo Road. So are those, do you know at this time if those spots that encroach on Navajo Road are town spots?
No.
They're not?
They're dedicated to the hotel.
Okay, and then across the street, okay.
Dedicated by the town.
By the town to the hotel? Do you have, you have a lease?
I've spoken, this has been going on for a long time. I have to reconfirm with Highway and I will do that.
Awesome.
Great. Okay, good. I just want to clarify, so Chris Tesuno, you're saying that, that eventually the IA system that you're going to put in for the new building will also service the resort units? Did I get that right?
No. No, he's going to expand that.
That system is going to be expanded.
At some point, they're going to probably replace.
Update the existing.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm asking.
But not with this.
Yeah, no, 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 I understand.
No, with this submission, but it's part of what David was submitting to the county in a long-term plan. So.
Okay. David, your engineer.
That's right, David, David Rhodes, yeah.
Okay. All right, yeah, I just wanted to be clear about that. I wasn't, I didn't know that until this discussion.
There's not any, there's not any other plans for the building units or anything else at this point. But that was part of what we were working on with, with the county and with the other systems. I guess I'm speaking a little too much.
Oh, that's good. That's, that's helpful. And what do you know exactly about, it's a conventional system currently, but what do we, what do we know about it? We don't really know anything about it, right?
We're going to get more information is what I understand.
Okay, all right.
Which we will look forward to getting.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, I think we need to add, yes, yes, add that question to the list. All right, so let's go to, to our questions. The first of which is, does the planning board agree the applicant should provide the required ADA spaces and confirm the parking in the town right away as official approval for the sole use of the property? I think we've covered that and the answer is definitely yes, right? Does the planning board agree the applicant should confirm that the site will remain in compliance with the Suffolk County density load? And you've already said yes to that as well, so we're good. Does the planning board agree to waive the requirement for ground elevations to be provided for the proposed walkways? I think so. Yes, everyone's yes on that one? Okay. Does the planning board agree the applicant should submit a grading and drainage plan for the proposed project area, which demonstrates an ADA compliant route is provided on the walkway to the pool? Yes. Does the planning board agree the applicant should revise the landscaping plans in accordance with this report? Yes, I think you already heard you say yes to that. Does the planning board agree the applicant should revise the exterior lighting plans in accordance with this report? Yes. Does the planning board agree the applicant should confirm whether a hot tub is proposed and indicated accordingly? You've given us that answer, but yes, thank you. Does the planning board agree the applicant should revise plans to make the existing bathrooms adjacent to the pool now ADA compliant and the second story of the proposed clubhouse ADA compliant pursuant to the fire marshal findings?
I think that's to be.
I think we need, just reading the way the question is phrased. Yeah, we, we agree that we would do some more digging on, on that piece of it. So I think the other thing is we'd like to see some information about the current conventional system that services the resort units. And Chris, I think you also mentioned some drive aisle dimension questions as well.
Yeah, just need dimensions for the drive aisles and the parking, parking lot. Make sure it meets that 24 feet minimum. Yeah, that'd be a good question to add, I should have.
So I have a question on that because in this memo, we're referencing a CO that has the parking layout on it. And also mentioned that we were going to be okay, even though some of the parking spaces aren't exactly to the required size. Would that not be true of aisleways as well? Since it's on the CO? I mean, it seems to me that the CO is the sign off that everything there was kosher at the time. So I mean, we're not really in a position, since we're not building motel units or anything new here of rearranging the site.
Yeah.
Since we already have a CO, would be my point.
Yeah, exactly. All right, well, let's, let's see. Yeah, we'll take a look at that and see what's actually on the CO. Yeah, that answers that question. Chris, thank you. Lori, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we're good on secret Chris for now. Okay. Our next item.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thanks, Chris. 5252 West Lake Car Charging Station. I see that our applicant is in the room. Bruce, this is you, right? Well, this is your project. So let's start with your review of the project, Will.
So this is a site plan application that has been made to construct two new electric vehicle charging stations, convert existing parking spaces into EV charging spaces, excite additional utilities at an existing multi-business site in Montauk. The proposed EV charging stations will provide EV charging for four existing parking spaces, which are proposed to be converted to EV charging spaces available for access by a smartphone app as part of this application. The site is located on West Lake Drive in Montauk, is own central business and is located within a New York State scenic area of statewide significance. Following the initial review of the planning board on January 15, 2025, the planning board issued written comments to the applicant regarding several issues. The board requested the applicant submit information about traffic generation and average charging times. The applicant stated the average vehicle charging time will be about 30 minutes and parking in EV designated stalls will not be reserved for EVs only. It is expected the maximum trip generation per hour will be 16, which the site is unlikely to exceed. The board requested the applicant revise their plans to include the setbacks between all proposed structures and property lines, and the applicant provided compliant plans. The board requested the applicant provide dimensions of the parking spaces and navigation aisles, which the applicant provided. Their proposed parking space and navigation aisle dimensions navigation aisle dimensions comply with town code regulations. The board asked the applicant to confirm if any drainage grading or changes to impervious surfaces were proposed as part of this project, which the applicant has confirmed there are no changes proposed. The board requested the applicant add more vegetative screening between the proposed utilities and the western property line, which the applicant appropriately responded to by proposing seven foot tall green arbor by day. The board requested the applicant clarify their lighting plan, which the applicant did, stating all proposed fixtures will be three thousand degrees Kelvin or less and the fixtures will be controlled by a timer. Some light spill over adjacent property lines was projected and the planning department recommends the applicant further minimize their light spill. In the previous review, attention was called to an existing concrete slab in the southwest corner of the property. Based on review of previous approvals, this slab never received site plan approval. For the last planning board approval, the area currently occupied by concrete was approved to be a planted area. In review of aerial imagery between two thousand and seven and two thousand and ten, it was changed from a planted area to a concrete slab, which was used for boat storage, as seen in this aerial image. This area of the property is adjacent to a residentially zoned parcel. The applicant has clarified this slab is proposed to be removed as part of this application and will be replaced by grass. With this change, it appears the total coverage of the site will comply with the total coverage allowed in the central business zone. In conclusion, the board should confirm it wishes to waive the setback requirements for the accessory structures and the applicant should submit lighting which complies with planning board policy on light spill for planning department review. The planning department recommends compliant lighting fixtures and new plans be submitted for review as a condition of approval. As a minor site plan, a public hearing is not required. Pending these two matters, the planning department recommends the application is complete and ready for approval. The applicant should submit plans which consistently show the proposed condition of the site, specifically the replacement of the concrete slab with grass.
Thank you, Will. Uh, does the applicant wish to be heard? Flip a coin. You don't have to.
Questions or?
All right, you're available for questions if we have any.
Yeah, sure. Why not?
All right, good. Yeah, we just might give you a chance. Say your fees. Um, all right, Bruce, lead our conversation.
All right. Great, thank you. So, yeah, I think, um, in terms of item number one, I think the traffic generation seems pretty, pretty minor for, um, the four units. Um, setbacks, I think we talked about that last time and agreed to waive those. Um, the parking lot configuration installs have been, um, dimensioned and, and they look, they look okay. Um, traffic flow, we just talked about. Uh, I think the screening is a great addition, um, along the, the north and west side. It also looks like there's a new fence proposed, maybe? I saw that in one of the images.
We have to fix.
Okay, so that's even better. Um, the lighting, I think the lighting needs to be tweaked, um, along the, there's a couple areas on the west side which butt up to the residential property and along the north, you know, there's quite a bit of light spill there that I think that needs to be, um, addressed and probably tweaked a little bit. And I think, you know, putting the, the lighting on a timer, um, I think that's a great idea. And, oh, yeah, the concrete slab, that looks like that's going to be removed, so, um, that area will be revegetated and I, I think that's, that's great. So that's all I got.
Okay, good. Thanks, Bruce. Anyone else have any other comments?
And that last point, Bruce, the revegetation, is that just going to be grass or is it going to be any plantings?
Uh, come, come forward, please, yeah.
It says grass.
And just identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Mark Rousher with Hall Energy Partners. Um, so we were intending on taking out the concrete. We obviously didn't know that was not permitted or whatever before we started the job. So, uh, we were intending to put them in grass, lawn back where it was.
Okay. You think that's a better idea than putting, uh, shrubbery there?
I mean, we wouldn't be opposed to, but I think if that's what you, if the board prefers that.
It is adjacent to residential.
But you have a fence along that west property line, right? Stockade Fence, six feet high?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think grass is okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the grass is fine.
Okay.
Could I get a little clarification on the light tweaking if we go back to the illuminations plan since I'm up here?
Um, yeah, so that is, uh, something you probably should discuss in some detail with Will, uh, you know, offline.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the changes are enormous, right? There's a little bit, there's a little bit of spill, but, you know, and given that this backs up to residential neighborhoods, it's important not to have that, to avoid that.
Okay.
So I think it's, it's a pretty minor tweak.
Okay, great.
But you really worked that out with Will.
Okay.
If you would do that, yeah. Okay.
Are there any questions while I'm up here?
I don't think so. Let's move this thing along. We've seen you guys a lot.
I know.
Um, all right. Okay, so our questions are, does the board wish to waive the setback requirements for the accessory structures on the west side of the lot?
Yes.
I think we do, yes. Uh, should the applicant, should the applicant lighting, you know, propose revised lighting that complies with the planning board policy for planning department review as a condition of approval?
Yes.
We've agreed, yes, that that should be a condition and that you'll figure out exactly what that means by working with, uh, with Will and the planning department. Uh, is the application complete and ready for approval?
Yes.
Yes.
And with the, I'm sorry, with the stipulation that the pad, the concrete pad gets removed and grass planted and the lighting gets tweaked, right? Is that?
Yeah.
There's like this small tweak to the questions. We just, we need them to provide the compliant lighting and for a consistent set of plans to be submitted. And if the board's okay with the planning department checking that and assuring that it's the system that you said, we'll put it on for resolution once we have those items.
Yeah, yeah, I think that was sort of implicit in this, right?
All right.
Yeah, that's right. Um, the application is complete and ready for approval. So thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
See you one more time. Thanks very much. Uh, all right. We're keeping on the theme of EG, EV chargers, the Marim EV Chargers phase proposal is the next thing on our, on our agenda. And Lori, that's you again, right? Is that correct? Okay. And Michael, you're going to lead our discussion about it. And Will, you're on with that.
So this project proposes adding four EV charging stations to two separate concrete pads at the site located on Ocean View Terrace in Montauk. Phase one of the project will include the construction of two EV chargers set back to back on top of the concrete, on top of a separate concrete pad located further south to the site. Phase two will include the construction of two more EV chargers set back to back on top of a separate concrete slab had located north of the chargers from phase one. You can see here, this is the area where the chargers are proposed. The EV chargers will provide charging for four existing parking spaces, which are to be converted to EV charging only as part of this application. The site is eighty-two thousand eighty-seven square feet or two point six oh three acres in size, located on Ocean View Terrace in Montauk and Zone B Residence. The site is improved with four two-story masonry resort buildings with patched porches, second-story decking, paved parking areas, wooden decking, concrete patios, and a pool. The site is pre-existing non-conforming with respect to zoning, as a resort is not permitted use in the B Residence Zone. The project is a type-two action pursuant to secret and chapter one twenty-eight of the town code and requires no further secret action. In an email, the applicant said that the chargers are intended to be used by hotel guests and employees and will not create additional traffic to the site. The planning department recommends this is sufficient information on how the chargers will be utilized and the planning board should determine if they agree. Properties directly to the north of the site are residential and the new structures may be visible from at least one of them. However, the proposed structures are small and are small both in size and height and are proposed to be located within existing parking areas. The board should consider whether the charger should be, could be considered a visual detriment to surrounding properties, and if so, the board may choose to request screening. The project proposes the conversion of four traditional parking spaces on the eastern side of the property to EV charging only spaces marking, marked with signage. Currently, the site has eighty-five parking spaces, three of which are marked as ADA spaces on the survey. Pursuant to the town code section regarding off-street parking requirements, the requirement for motels and hotels is one point two five parking spaces per bedroom. No additional traffic is expected to be generated by the availability of the EV chargers. As the applicant has stated, they are for the resort, for the use of resort guests and employees only. The planning board previously indicated EV charging spaces need not be deducted from the tow parking requirement. Therefore, the parking requirements will not increase for the site. No dimensions of the parking spaces proposed to be converted are provided in the application materials. Additionally, one plan shows the charging stations placed to the north of the curb while another shows them placed south of the curb. Um, I talked to the applicant, um, earlier today and they confirmed that they will be behind the curb to protect them from potential vehicle collisions. The applicant should confirm the dimensions of the parking stalls to ensure compliance. If the space dimensions will be modified, that should also be shown in the plans. The planning department recommends this project as a minor site plan as no variances are required. Health Department approval is not required. The proposed work is approximately thirty square feet. No additional parking will be required and no public controversy has been generated at this point. The board should discuss whether the siding of the charging stations may be considered a visual detriment to the neighboring properties, and if not, may deem this project a minor site plan. The applicant should refer to the town code to confirm all necessary requirements have been met with this site plan submission. No utility lines, hydrants, fire cisterns, or fire wells are depicted on the survey. The applicant should confirm if new electrical services are proposed for the installation, for installation associated with the new charging stations and show this information clearly on the plans. The dimensions of the subject EV spaces were not submitted as part of this application. The applicant should specify the dimensions of these spaces in their next submission and confirm whether. No lighting information was submitted as part of this application and the applicant should clarify if any new or proposed modified lighting is intended to be included as part of this project. In addition to formal site plan review, the proposed project will also require approval from the architectural review board. In conclusion, the applicant should submit dimensions of the charging spaces, confirm if new electrical services are required, and clarify if any new or modified lighting is proposed as part of this project.
Okay, thank you, Will. Ms. Wiltshire?
Um, we have minor health keeping to do with them on this, but there are, there's no lighting proposed as part of this project.
Okay. Ah, there we go. All right. So, Michael, please.
So I love EV chargers. I have, I have an electric car. It's a Chevy Bolt. It's great. It's fantastic. Um, this is for hotel guests and employees only. Is this free for hotel guests and employees only? Or how do you keep non-employees and non-hotel guests from just driving down there and charging? Is there, if it's, if it's only for hotel guests, is there like a little code you can punch in and only they can?
I will find that out.
Okay. Uh, are these level two, level three? I'm, I'm curious too about the infrastructure.
Level two.
Okay.
So on this little colorful thing that we submitted four pages.
Okay. And, uh, the, the previous, the previous, uh, agenda item, uh, they have their infrastructure in it and it's about, I mean, I'm six and a half feet tall and it's as tall as me, one of these pieces. So are you building that same kind of system here that it's, they have this, this six and a half foot tall electrical component and then two other smaller ones? And that serves all four of their, and I want their parking spaces. And I wonder how you guys are going to do this?
I'm, I did not understand the question. I'm sorry.
The infra, the, the physical mechanism to charge the, the cars.
Uh huh.
Oh, that, there you, oh, I wish, you know, that helps.
Oh, you didn't see that? That's what I meant by the little color handout that was part of the application.
I think there's more, there's more infrastructure than just, this is just like the plug and the, uh, you know, these have credit cards you can put in and to, so you can, they charge you for this.
It looks like there's a QR code or something on there.
There is. Yes, correct. There is. Yeah, or right. But I imagine that the, the, there's another component, there's another mechanism to make this work. I mean, for my, you know, for my car, I just plug it into my house.
Right.
Right?
No, I understand.
But you have quick charge, you know, level two chargers and you have four. I just imagine you're going to have as, as big a unit as the previous, uh, the previous.
This is what they gave us. This, this, at least, this right here is what they gave us. And it's not that much bigger than what's just over here in the town parking lot. It's just a pedestal with two, two hoses. I mean, uh, chargers, plugs connected to it.
Yeah, I know where you're headed with that question.
Yeah, it's, I just, I'm just curious where, where the infrastructure, where these mechanisms are going to go.
Right.
I wonder, I don't know much about charging stations, but maybe they had to put in like an electrical, um, like a, a, yeah, transformer because they're separate from the building electric. But because Marim has its own electric, maybe it's coming off of there.
So they have, they, they, they proposed two spaces right next to the hotel and the other two are other side of the parking lot. So are they going to dig a trench? Are you going to put some of the infrastructure on that side? Because that is where the visual, so when I'm sitting, when I'm standing by the hotel on the two spaces, it, it goes down, there's a hill, I can't see anyone looking north.
I don't think it's set the other side.
Yeah, I thought it was just right next to you.
They're separate.
Right here and right here.
These, and these two, yeah. I gotta pay attention.
They're calling it a conduit stub.
Conduit stub.
Conduit stub.
I'm just curious about how much electricity that's going to form. Interested in, but how that's going to work. Maybe on inside the building.
So that.
So, right, so, so there's a little door that goes to like a, a supply office right off the parking spaces. I imagine like if they do it inside, they would do it there.
So you want to know where the infrastructure is going to be located?
I'm pretty sure I should, but it seems like it's two hundred and forty meters from the floor off the main surface.
That sounds right.
The surface is going to be around the house. It's going to allow these things to vary along. It's just like, you know, same as your.
Right, so this actually, this schematic does.
That does, yeah.
More or less explains it, right?
Yeah, because it's the, the electrical room.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't get the whole, all right.
Right.
I think like Jen said, the other one's different because they're not.
But we're going to ask, we have a question that really gets to this issue.
So is that clear?
That's good. And.
Oh, that's good, okay.
Again, the, I, I, I was in error thinking, I, I don't find these, any four of these spaces that, that anyone north of the property can see these because the, the, the driveway sinks down a little bit, so it's, it's hard to see.
Plus there'll be other cars in the way.
That too, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
True, so that's good. Try to, you were thinking of.
That's right.
That's what I wanted.
Yeah.
Um, that's it. That's all I got. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
I have a comment. Um, pursuant to the use, I know the applicant has said this is just for the, uh, resort use. Does it really matter if it's open to the public for use? What's the disqualifier there? Or am I missing something?
They're not supposed to park.
Yeah, those four parking spots are.
Not understanding the charging, they're not, the public is not allowed to park in the, these, these parking spaces are designated just for all hotel guests.
Yeah, it's not public parking anyway, so.
That's your liability.
Okay.
And, and I know that they, they're very guarded as to who they let in. They have a guard actually.
Oh, that's the question then about how they prohibit, um.
Yeah. Yeah, you can't get on the property.
Yeah, no, that's.
But it's a good, it's a good question though, because of the other.
I, I parked right in there.
During the season.
You're lucky.
Off-season.
All right, the German Shepherd's didn't come. All right, the German Shepherd's didn't come out. Um.
Chargers.
Yeah, I know it's
I know.
But these are good questions as we get more EV charging applications that we're going to have to really think about these kinds of issues about public private, who's allowed, how it works, all that kind of thing.
Yeah, password now.
If nobody else has any questions, we will go to the questions. With Josh, the applicant submit dimensions of the EV charging only parking spaces and confirm their locations. I think we know what the locations are. It would be good to have a confirmation on the on the on the size of the of the parking spaces themselves. So are we yes on that?
Yes.
Should the applicant confirm if new utility installation is required and update plans to show applicable utility lines, which gets to infrastructure? But I think there the question is, there isn't, right? There's no new you no new utility installation required to power these things.
Well, if you if they're level two, you got to put in the two forty volt.
Two twenty.
Two twenty. And is that already set up that way is it's not a it's not a huge deal to do that. I'm just
They could be one ten as well. Just takes longer.
It's I like I like level two. It's fine.
So but I think it is legitimate question is, you know, is there any new utility installation upgrade to existing electric required?
It's like they're wiring everything right into a utility.
Yeah, but I don't know if any of that is new service or existing or whatever. It'd be great to just clarify, Lori. Does everyone agree with this?
Yeah.
Okay. Should the applicant clarify if any new or proposed modified lighting is intended to be included as part of the project? We've talked about that. The answer is no. Does the planning board agree this proposal qualifies as a minor site plan?
Yes.
Do we all agree on that?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. All right. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
So next up is the Lands End Marina. Ava, that's yours, and Tina, you're going to stand in for Brian Frank, right?
Yes. So, board members, this is the Lands End Marina Site Plan Special Permit located at three eighty-six West Lake Drive in Montauk. Site plans up here. Background information, the application is for site plan and special permit approval to expand the recreational marina at this location. There are currently twenty-three existing slips. The applicant is proposing an additional twenty-nine boat slips for a total of forty-nine, and also to build a new bathhouse with three restrooms, locker space, a second-floor storage office, second-floor office, and to construct new four-foot-wide ADA accessible paths. A new sanitary system will also be constructed. An existing one will be abandoned and removed, and new fencing and revegetation are also proposed.
Excuse me, Tina?
Hi.
Are you supposed to be sharing your screen?
I was, yes. I did. Thank you, Matt. This is the site plan for the Lands End Special. I'm going to reread that all again so you can see it.
The other image was better.
Sorry, folks.
Sorry, Tina.
They know, I appreciate it. I didn't realize they turned the screen sharing off. Continuing, the property is located in the resort zone and is within the Harbor Protection Overlay District pursuant to C ground chapter one twenty-eight of the Town Code. The project is unlisted, and the planning board did declare the agency in January twenty thirteen. So I'm going to start going through the application status and the comments of the department. The first thing I'll note is that the application has been reviewed by the board many times over the last several years. There are large gaps in submissions from the applicant, which is the main driver in why it's taken so long to be reviewed. But it looks like it's getting close based on the most recent comments. So our first set of comments is regarding the sanitary system. Everything that we asked for last time has been addressed. The data on groundwater depths has been added to the plan. The last small issue is that we are looking at sanitary calculations and want to make sure that the office use is included in the calculation based on Brian's review. It doesn't seem to have been. So they do just need to update the plan to show that information. However, doing a quick calculation ourselves, the site will still be compliant with the Suffolk County density load. The proposed flow would be eight hundred eighteen GPD, and the allowed is nine hundred. So the applicant just needs to confirm that. Regarding the dock construction, there was a little bit of inconsistency between the plan notes and the narrative issued by the applicant. There's a note on the plans on sheet C one indicating that preservative treatment acceptable for use by the town of East Hampton would be applied for the good to construct the dock. However, the town is requesting that no chemically treated materials are utilized in dock construction, and I do think that the applicant did mention that in their cover letter. So we just want the note on the plan to be consistent with what they've said. There are alternatives to treated wood that are utilized throughout the town for dock construction. There is a scenic and conservation easement hatched in red. I'm circling with my mouse here. The applicant, since the last review, has enlarged the area to be conserved in this fashion, which is consistent with the board's comments, and we think this is appropriate. Regarding clearing and landscaping, the proposal is now conforming to the allowed clearing on the property. There's a building determination, building inspector determination regarding the non-conforming clearing on this property at forty thousand and some odd square feet, and the clearing proposed is thirty-nine thousand square feet below this value, which is appropriate. They also have updated their revegetation plan as requested in the last review. The stormwater calculations also look appropriate. We do just want to have this reviewed by the engineer, but it seems that those are also in good shape. The lighting remains outstanding. There was a comment on the lighting that was not addressed in the most recent submission. The plan in this submission is still from April twenty twenty-four, so we do need that addressed, so we have compliant lighting. There was a small discrepancy regarding the size of the structures. That's detailed in the memo. Basically, the bathhouse on the Deweeks plans and on the engineering plans has different square footage. It's a minor difference, so the applicant should just reconcile that and make sure that they've provided consistent plans to the department. And then I note that the planning department's recommending a two-foot separation from groundwater for all their pride structures, and that that should be a condition of site plan and not to resource special permit approval. Regarding structures on the site, I'm going to zoom in a little bit. In previous discussions, the planning board has indicated their concurrence with the replacement of the new structures on site. There's a walk-in freezer, dumpster, and a new bathhouse, as well as a proposed sanitary system, leaching fields. The issue with the first three structures is that we need to determine whether or not variance is required. We had discussed this at the last meeting. The applicant is proffering these are water-dependent uses, and we believe a building inspector determination would be required for that. The issue is really whether or not a variance is needed. Again, the planning board hasn't said that they don't want these facilities where they are, it's just whether or not a variance is required. A variance will be required for the septic system, which is a hundred and sixty-three feet or so away from the wetlands, which are here, where two hundred is proposed for a new system and the Harbor Protection Overlay. The parking is compliant with respect to the number of spaces. That's been previously established, but we did attach two sets of fire marshal comments to the memo explaining that additional ADA compliance needs to be shown on the plans. I think the fire marshal is looking for more details that just weren't included in the plan set. So to conclude, oh, I'm sorry, one more comment that we just made a note about construction, that a very standard requirement in the Harbor Protection Overlay District is that project limiting fencing and sedimentation and erosion control measures be implemented. So we would be recommending that that be adhered to in this should the board choose to grant grant approval. In conclusion, the application's still incomplete pending the resolution of these issues. However, these do seem rather small, and I would suggest that the applicant should be ready for their ZBA review at this time. The planning board hasn't, I mean, aside from the ADA, which needs to be addressed, and we need to be sure we've got ADA compliance, I don't see anything vastly changing this that would prohibit the applicant from moving forward with the process. So thank you.
Thank you, Tina. This is the applicant, which to be heard.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Whalen, Whalen, Fowler, and Landmarks, here on behalf of the applicants, and I'm also accompanied by Shannon McCaffrey from Deweeks, and also we have Chris Miller and his sister Tanya, who are the applicants. So everybody's here. So first of all, this is an existing, a no-frills marina. And I mean no frills. It consists of a dock, twenty-three boat slips, and a dirt parking lot, and that's it. There was a house on the property, existing house, but that has nothing to do with the marina. So obviously, we want to surface the parking lot, put in bathrooms and a little marina office, and then the other minor facilities are, you know, freezer station, ice station, freezer, and a dumpster for people that are leaving the boats and need to dispose of, you know, fish trash or whatever that's coming off the off the off the vessels. So I agree with Tina. I think that this is really fairly minor stuff that's left. Some of this was discussed in October, which was the last time we were before you. So let me just hit the the high points of what I might miss. Shannon will First of all, concerning the health department calculations, the density flow for the the restroom building and office, the health department density flow regulations for marinas are based on the number of boat slips, and that includes all marina facilities. So we're not renting the office to a third party. It's not like a professional office that'll be this is an office for the marina. So that's included in the density load calculations that the health department uses. They simply base their calculations on the number of slips. That doesn't mean it's only for slips. It's for all the facilities related to the marina. So that actually was discussed in October. I don't know if we and I know I said the same thing, basically. I don't know whether we submit anything in writing, but the health department calculations, the density flow load calculations do include the marina office. The dock construction, the engineer did not remove note two from the drawings. There the intention is to use non-treated lumber, and there's a note, as Tina indicated, that's not consistent with that. So this time around, hopefully, we'll remove the note, but it is intended to use non-treated lumber, and the note was inadvertently not removed. Lighting, I believe, and Shannon can confirm this, I think the only thing with lighting is, and this also came back in October, the lighting plan uses the term MH to denote mounting height. And the question that I think Brian raised back in October is, you're not telling us the mounting height of the fixtures. We are, but it just MH means mountain height. So I think that's all it is. So the information's on there, but it was, you know, not super clear. The structures, the bathhouse structure, the discrepancy, and I don't know how you change this, or we don't have to, Deweeks is using on their plans the gross floor area of the bathhouse building, the two floors. Gross floor area measured to the outside of the exterior walls. The engineer, for health department purposes, the health department uses essentially the equivalent of a habitable floor area, which is measurement from the interior walls in, and that is why the engineer's figures are lower than the Deweeks figures. And I don't know that that I understand why the confusion would be on on the town's point of view, but that is the that's the reason the figures are correct, but they're for different things. And lastly, it's the last item really, so obviously, we contend that all the structures, including, in our view, the marina office and the bathhouse, are all they're all marina structures, they're all water-dependent. Certainly, there should be no question when it comes to things like the ice station and the and the freezer and the dumpster. Those things need to be near the docks. We have submitted a letter yesterday to the building department asking for interpretation. As you know, the current building inspector is only here to the end of the week, so we'll see whether we have an answer back in time. If we don't have micro, we will deal with, you know, how we'll deal with it because, you know, I don't know how long it would take to get a new interpretation. Hopefully, we have an interpretation on on those questions, and then we'll we'll proceed based on whatever he says. So, oh, and the last other thing, and again, Shannon may have things to add to this, but on the 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 access, I think the only thing with the ADA access is we we weren't showing on the site plan maybe because it's so too too cluttered. The fire marshal wanted the depiction of the curb stops at the end of the parking spaces. I think there's a notation that curb stops will be used, but he was suggesting it would be better to actually show curb stops on the plan because you don't obviously want cars to be able to go unimpeded into the ADA-approved walkway. So that's really what I have. I think Shannon wants to add anything or view any questions for me?
State your name for the record. Shannon McCaffrey, Deweeks Planning. The only other additional items that I would add is that for regarding the fire marshal comments for the access from the ramp to the dock, we will submit supporting documentation that we're in compliance for that, and that we can also add an additional note to the plan that the handicap spaces will be a ADA-compliant surface and not the gravel surface, the court surface that's in the rest of the driveway. And we also evaluated the separation to groundwater for the bathhouse, and we can be in compliance with that two-foot separation recommended by the planning board, planning department.
All right, thanks, Shannon. Ava?
Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Tina. I'm Richard, I'm Shannon. You guys really hit on all the questions that I had. Rich, you mentioned that the the office space for the sanitary is included in the calculations. I think just having that in writing, obviously, to, you know, so it's on the record, that would be preferred. The I did see on the C one that that note, but then your cover letter did indicate with regards to the preservative treatment, it was in the cover letter from December that I know it was added that no chemically treated wood would be used in the construction, so that obviously just needs to be updated on the C one. With regards to the lighting, you said, you know, the MH abbreviation was used. Maybe just provide clarification that MH is mounting height, so we're on the same page. With the the discrepancy between the new structures, you mentioned the the two, you know, principles that were their methodologies were different. Again, I think maybe just delineating between how those measurements were arrived at, again, in writing. And, yeah, with the parking and the access, you know, you just said that that would all be submitted to be ADA-compliant as for the fire marshal. Now, I think this is really, like Tina said, some general maintenance items here that seem to be all being addressed, and we're all on the same page. Any other comments?
Thanks, Ava. Anybody else have anything to add or any other specific questions, anyone?
We'll answer that in writing, those things that Ava explained that we would, as Tina indicated, we would like to be able to, while we submit that to you, we'd like to be able to proceed to the zoning board, so if there's any extra
I was going to just say that, too. Absolutely.
I think that's good. I think that if you don't have the inspector determination, it's going to be, you know, submit, you submit, though, you know, but we need that because that's, you know, in order to know what we have to notice and things like
Joe Palermo knows we need it. Whether he's capable of getting that by the end of the week, we'll find out. If he doesn't, then we have to decide how to handle it, you know, what to do.
Okay. All right, good, thanks. Yeah, so we'll we'll go through the questions then, some of which are moot based on this discussion, but let's go through them. Should sanitary flow calculations be revised to incorporate the second-floor office and reconcile the difference in square footage of the bathroom, bath house, which includes the office between the engineer's site plan and the building floor and elevation plans? I think that's being done, right?
Yeah.
Being clarified, right? You know, the same with number two. Should note two be removed from the from sheet C one of the engineering plans regarding the dock to help ensure the dock is only constructed of untreated materials? Yes, and you already agreed that that's the case. Should the lighting fixture heights be added to the sheet L one of the engineering plans? Yes, but we just we've agreed that your MH just needs to be clarified somewhere that that's what that is. Should the site plan be further revised to address the chief fire marshal's requirement for curb stops? be further revised to address the chief fire marshal's requirement for curb stops along the ADA access path and clarify ADA access to the floating dock? Yes, you've agreed to move forward with that, right?
Yeah.
Does the planning board want to direct the applicant to obtain the determination from the building department regarding the eligibility of the bathhouse dumpster and freezer from the 100-foot wetland setback? And you're, yes, we, this needed, and you're in the process of doing it. So, I think we're in pretty good shape, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon.
So, our next, moving on to our next application, which is Eco Acres, AKA 199 Bull Path. I see the applicant is here. And this is Jen.
Yes, this is me.
Okay. So, we'll start with Tina. You're going to give us the rundown on this before we jump in?
Yes, thank you. The application is for 199 Bull Path, also called EKOS. It is a subwaiver located in East Hampton. I have the aerial image here. It's between Old Northwest Road and Bull Path. The application is to, sorry, I'm just gonna switch to the map here. The application is to subdivide an approximately 6.722-acre lot, which has frontage on both Bull Path and Old Northwest Road into two individual lots, one of approximately 54,000 square feet and one of approximately 59,000 square feet. Two reserve areas are proposed in addition to an access and utility easement on the southern edge of the property line. The site is located in A3 residence zone and the water recharge overlay district. Therefore, an open space subdivision is required per Chapter 193. The site is currently vacant and is located within several areas of environmental concern, including the Suffolk County Pine Barrens region, groundwater management zone five, and the town's water recharge overlay, as I just noticed. Issues for discussion, moving on to those. Following the November 2024 review, the planning board issued several comments, and the memo goes through each of those and how they were responded to in the most recent submission. During the last review, the board agreed to subwaiver overall layouts appropriate, asked that the plans be updated to show lot widths and setbacks and building envelopes. So, the latter one has been addressed. Everything that needs to be shown now is in terms of building envelopes and setbacks. The overall design was also agreed to as appropriate by the board. The next question, we asked for clarity on who will manage the reserve area. The applicant has updated the map to show that they intend to dedicate the area to a homeowners association, which is fine and compliant with code. We just note they have to ensure that they comply with the requirements in code and that a draft homeowners association acceptable to the planning board attorney would be required as a condition of final approval. At the last review, we spoke about a revegetation plan. In this memo, we're just noting, you know, usually we try to get all these things done within a preliminary subdivision application. But we had, the applicant did provide responses to these comments already and said that they had asked that this be part of the final approval. I think that's also acceptable. You know, Lot 2 is overcleared per the town's regulations, as shown on the subdivision. It's a small amount of overclearing, but still, it will be corrected prior to an issuance of final approval, which is appropriate. Regarding the status of the access road, we had noted in previous reviews that this wasn't really visible, but it has been located and it is visible from the road. And the driveway is clearly shown on the subdivision map. The town engineer issued comments, and I just want to clarify, he was just noting that if there are improvements necessary in the right-of-way for the driveway, that a highway work permit would be required. And that's just a standard thing. So, if there's any improvements that encroach into the town's property, a permit's necessary. The applicant was asked to submit a common driveway plan. That's required per the citation in the report. We received that on Monday. We hadn't received that until now, so I will send that to the engineer for review. Co-requirements. The board had asked about water availability. The applicant had indicated that they were planning to use water from Bull Path and water main is shown on Bull Path. And that's fine, but in this latest submission, there's a proposed well shown with the setback from the sanitary system that's required for a well. So, just want them to clarify what the proposed plan is. And we would just note, one of the reasons we're asking is because if there is a water service from Bull Path to these properties, that's to traverse a very long distance, and any reserve area easement would need to account for its existence and its maintenance and so forth. No more comments are addressed. Additional comments in both May and November, we had noted that the project's unlisted and requested an EAF for the planning board review, so we could commence with the coordinated review. That was not addressed until Monday, so now that we have that, it will be reviewed. And then, lastly, in both May and November of the discussions on this, there was a lot of discussion regarding the history of the property and historical mining operations. There wasn't a lot of detail discussed in terms of what had occurred and any site reclamation activities that may have happened. In the report, I just note for the board's reference, some of the information that they've recently requested on another application of a former sandmine, which is more extensive, and that's in the context of an EIS. But nevertheless, in the context of SEACRA, the board is obligated to ensure that environmental impacts are addressed, and any identified environmental impacts will be mitigated to the extent practical. Based on what we have in the file right now, it does not appear that there's sufficient information in order for the board to make that finding based on any evidence or information. So, we did want to ask the applicant to provide information, if they can, regarding that. And if not, we have to discuss next steps in terms of what other investigation protocols. If there's no information existing that can be used to address this concern, what other protocols we can follow to address it. So, in conclusion, the application remains incomplete, and we should be sure to address each item just to bring it to completeness. Thank you.
Thanks, Tina. Applicants.
I actually have a question, which I submitted to the board regarding gates in driveways. And as turns out, the next time, before the board, it came up. So, it's on this, that was a question I had for a completely different subdivision that happened 30 years ago. But on this particular application, it's, again, gonna come up. So, the code requires the building envelopes, and we showed building envelopes on the property. At some point, this applicant, presumably this application is approved by the board, a covenant will get recorded. And the covenant will say that all structures have to be in the building envelopes, except for the driveway. So, I would hope, and maybe it doesn't have to be decided tonight, but I want to throw out to the board, that we would like that covenant, which is a private agreement that we record against the DE to tell everybody what could happen to the property in the future, that that covenant that we're recording on this particular property only, I'm not trying to go back in history, but I would like the ability to put a gate somewhere on that property, provided it complies with town code. I think the idea of building envelopes is to, is to keep pools and garages and houses contained on a site. I don't think the intent was to tell you, people, that you never have a gate. So, throwing it out there, the planning department can digest it, think about it. But on this particular application, we would like the covenant that we will eventually record to allow for gates in the driveway.
Okay. I'm just gonna respond to that.
Yep.
So, you know, we have been in discussion with the chief building inspector. In his final days, you know, he's devoted, you know, energy to this conversation with, you know, our attorney and Tina, myself, and Jen, and some others. And, you know, we're very much aware of this issue, and we will, you know, have further conversation about this soon.
Yeah, right. I guess, depending on how he decides, it may not be an issue. But we'll see.
Yeah.
Okay.
We noted.
Okay, thank you. So, what's the other one? Oh, so, health department. There is a fire, I'm not sure the current status of it. We've been before the board for a while on this. When we originally submitted the application, the, there was a fire hydrant in the street that had not been set up yet. So, water was on Bull Path. It may be hooked up now, I'm not sure. Our, we have a pending application before the health department to use wells rather than public water on this property, because there is no public water on Old North Road.
Yeah.
Right. And it's not really ideal to try to, there's a lot of topography change, a lot of, I don't think the planning department, I don't think the planning board would allow us to run public water through the scenic easement. So, we're pretty hopeful that they're gonna allow us to use wells. Let's probably have, we probably have an answer within a week on that. Been for them for a while. So, the question. Oh, you know, this hasn't been an active mine or whatever it was used for for over 40 years. 1985 was when it was last used. So, unfortunately, we don't have a lot of information to give you. We're contract ID buying the property. Right now, if we wanted to build on it, we could build a house. What we're asking for is permission to build two houses by subdivide of the property. All of the areas that were mined are not going to be utilized. They're in an area of scenic easements. So, I think the purpose of SEACRA is to make sure that what we're asking to do isn't going to cause any environmental problems. I think that answer is pretty straightforward. Whether previous activities of the site, I mean, mining is probably not ideal, but I don't know what happened there 40 years ago. So, I'm not really sure how to, this has come up at previous discussions before the board. You know, I guess if somebody could tell us, we can't, we can't make up the history because we don't know it. But if you, if somebody could say this would satisfy the board, then we could probably try to provide it.
We can provide that. We can provide that.
Yeah, I mean, I can pipe in. I think the first step, if there's no history available, would be a Phase 1 environmental site assessment, right, which has to be conducted according to ASTM standards, right? There's a certain amount of information that companies that prepare those must review and research in order to prepare their assessment. They also do like a site inspection to see if there's evidence of recognized environmental conditions that aren't apparent in their records. And based on that, if there's recognized environmental conditions that they find based on their site history, research, and the investigation, then you would do environmental testing to determine whether or not those conditions have actually impacted on site soils. And if not, then, you know, that would be satisfactory. Yes.
It's not, it's not an onerous process.
If we had that already, and I submitted, that would be enough for that. You know, before we went to contract, we did Phase 1, came back with only one recognized possible environmental concern, which is that, we think there was things dumped here illegally at some point. That's why, so we used these for environmental, which is recognized environmental company. They came back and said they had no concerns other than the fact that some stuff had been dumped there. And they did five test holes to make sure that whatever was dumped there hadn't leached anything into the soil, and it came back all clean.
Definitely submit that to the planning department.
Absolutely.
That does seem like information that's relevant.
Well, to be fair, I've been before the board for 15 months. This is the first time you've asked me for that.
We've asked for information about, right.
You did not ask me.
What's going on?
You could have asked this in any of the three previous memos or 15 months I've been here. You asked for it tonight, and I told you I haven't.
Okay, great.
It's not that many.
Okay. All right. So, anything else you want to add?
Well, I just, I guess my question is, you know, how do we get, and I don't mean this in a, I'm just kind of figuring out like where, where we're headed. You know, if I have a Phase, if I have a Phase 1 or Phase 2 that's clean, what do we need to get, I guess I'd ask, what do I need to do to get deemed complete and have a hearing on it?
We're close.
Yeah, I think we're very close.
So, Jen's gonna lead our discussion, and she'll go over there.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Tina. I do think we're close, John. I think that, you know, the fact that you have the test holes done, that was gonna be my question, you know, what's, what's the soil, kind of. I think you're right. I think that the, you know, I actually went today to the site, and the curb cut is visible, the driveway's visible. The first scenic easement or reserve on the, you know, fronting Old Northwest Road, it's all like dead black pines now, unfortunately. And then the two lots, the only, you know, the only thing is all of those lumps of dirt that are kind of like piled in there. So, and then it does look like the reserve section to the west is, it's, you know, it's down like 25 feet from the natural grade. So, it has, you know, it's been mined. But, you know, it's, it's, it's gonna be deeded to the homeowners association for the subdivision. So, I don't see that there's really any, there's no remediation that needs to be done with that, right? I don't think. So, I don't, I don't have any real issues with it, except for the environmental impact, you know, and you've done that. So, you submit that.
Yeah, I have one, but I'll submit it.
Okay.
So, yeah, and we have been asking for the history, by the way, for this. And that really is, the question under that question.
And we did have a discussion last time about the history. I thought we were past it, but I don't have the history.
Okay. All right. So, I think we're clear now what it is.
Yeah. First time I was asked for, I mean, I've had it for a year and a half.
Yeah, well, that's the, that's the history right there. That is the history. So, okay. Any other comments?
I don't have any other comments.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Oh, me. No, I don't have any other comments. The rest of you, yes, you may speak.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have a comment? Okay. All right. So, we only have two pretty simple-ish questions. Should the applicant review the unaddressed and/or partially addressed comments issued by the planning department and planning board during prior reviews and respond to each comment or future submissions accordingly? And Tina, you can help, you know, enumerate exactly what they are. We don't need to do it this second, but, you know, there are only, there are very few things, I think.
Right. And the question goes on, right? So, item one is the common driveway plan, which was submitted on Monday for the first time. Item two was approval for the driveway improvements at the right-of-way. As I stated, that is just, we could just require that as a condition of approval, and it would, that the highway work permit get sought by the highway department. SEACRA, right? So, we just got the EAF on Monday, again. So, we have to look at that, and then the planning board will have to accept it if it's complete. If we need revisions to the EAF, we're gonna send comments back to the applicant. I did notice that there's endangered species potentially indicated as existing on the site. So, I have to make sure the natural resources department is aware and can opine. And then the site history, which we learned is available just now. So, those were the four things.
Okay.
And I think we talked about.
And that's it. So, that's it. It's just those four, really. Right? There's four issues.
Right. And because question two, the revegetation plan, I think we're all agreeing will be a condition of final approval, right? So, nobody is accepting that.
Right. On Lot 2, yeah, exactly. Okay. All right. So, it's not that heavy a lift, John, I don't think.
Yeah, no, I think the common driveway plan was submitted. We'll wait for the town's engineer to look at it. The EAF has been submitted, and it was revised and submitted again.
The EAF I got was on Monday.
Oh, okay. Okay. That might be true. So, I think.
You're gonna submit your Phase 1 information.
And also my Phase 1 information. Thanks. Okay, thank you.
I think that's all we need. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
All right. So, Tina, you're still in the hot seat there. We're gonna talk about the code change, the creation of Tier 1 personal wireless.
Yes, thank you. This is a short presentation regarding proposed change to Chapter 255, 142. It's regarding personal wireless service facilities. The town board, in a recent meeting, indicated general support for the code change. And as required in town code, they're referring it to the planning board for comment. I won't take too much of your time. This is really, this is really driven by the need to charge appropriate fees for the review of personal, I can't even say it, PWSF. It's like such a mouthful. The fees that can be charged for these are restricted by the federal government, and the town is currently not charging for these are restricted by the federal government, and the town is currently not charging consistent with those maximums, even though the efforts we're expending are consistent with and exceed those. So this, this code change is really to try to correct that to the extent that we can in accordance with the federal regulations. So basically, we're proposing a change to the fee schedule, which would necessitate a code change. So right now, in our code, we only have a Tier 1 facility, and we charge one fee of $500, and that includes activities such as co-locations of wireless infrastructure on existing poles, relocation of poles or new poles. However, we're proposing to create two tiers of the personal wireless facility in our code, similar to the Tier 2 A and B structure that we have. We're doing a Tier 1 A and B. Tier 1A would just be co-locations. Those are the much simpler, only really looking at technical aspects of the installation. And the Tier 1B would be the more complicated reviews that also consider aesthetics and design of the new pole infrastructure. So, the code change that would be necessary to do that is just to create the Tier 1A and B structure in our code. Right now, we only have Tier 1, and in the future, we'll have Tier 1A and B. The other part of this, this presentation, which doesn't really pertain to the board because it's only a resolution fee change, is we're gonna be charging the right-of-way fees. Right now, the town's able to charge $270 for every pole that's installed in the right-of-way, but we're not charging it because it was never added to our fee resolution. The town board has the authority to change that via resolution and has indicated that they're willing to do so. So, the action type 2, it's really very minor nature, and we are just referring this to the planning board for comment on this very, very small change. Thank you.
Thanks, Tina. Yeah, I mean, it seems to me this is pretty much slammed on, right? I mean, there's money that we're not charging. We could be.
And it really is a lot of review that we do, yeah.
Good.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I mean, I would just need to send comments on the board's behalf. Does the board generally think this is acceptable?
Yes.
Do we offer this as acceptable as written?
Yes.
Okay, we absolutely find it acceptable, and we encourage.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Right, thanks, Tina. Okay, we just have a couple things left. The first is, on a regular meeting, the first is an extension of time for Fort Pond Native Plants. I will read it in. In the matter of the application of Fort Pond Native Plants additions, site plan, Suffolk County tax map 300-49-3-5.1, extension of time, I have read the resolution to call for its adoption.
Second.
Plenty of seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any names, any abstentions? Pass to Jerry.
Is this the next one, the Way Scott one that's on the do?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is. Yeah, it's right behind you.
Yeah, close.
All right. In the matter of the application of Adama Do and Koskacidis Minor Subdivision, Suffolk County Tax Map 300-197-3-10, extension of time, I have read the resolution to call for its adoption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Final item is the adoption of our minutes from April 2. Has everyone read them? Does anyone have any comments, corrections?
Really didn't catch.
Does it look good to you? Okay. All right, it looks good to you. I think we're in good shape. All right. All in favor of approving the minutes of April 2?
Aye.
Okay. Looks like it's passed to Jerry. No abstentions, any names. We're good to go. You know what's next.
I'm making a motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.